...the meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council to order. Council members, I'm sorry to inconvenience you today unexpectedly, but I need some help. I cannot get the information I need in order to conclude an allegation of disparate treatment that's been made by one of our employees. So if you'll recall, on October the 6th, one of our employees came to me with a complaint that the discipline she was receiving as a result of a complaint against her was disparate from male employees who have been accused of similar things in the past. And so the gist of her complaint was that she was being treated more severely because she was a minority female. As you know, section four of the city rules and regulations give the responsibility to the mayor when one of these allegations of that nature is made against one of the three charter officers. I'd want to point out that I did not ask for this responsibility. The city council in 2018 developed this rule, and this was done before I was ever mayor. And believe me, I did not ask for this responsibility, nor do I really want it. But it's mine. And so because the allegation involved a matter of illegal behavior, if it were true, and there's been no assumption that it's true, but I did initiate an investigation, as is my duty. Because the city is potentially the offending party in this, not necessarily an individual, but the city as a whole, I appointed our legal department to get involved in order to mitigate and do what we needed to do to make sure that, first of all, we did not treat an employee unfairly. If we had, and two, what can we do to make this, correct this situation if we had, so that we're, made this person whole and we're not liable? So I appointed our city attorney to commence the investigation. The city attorney has done this investigation, and I'm prepared to render a finding on this. The sticking point, the reason we're here today, is that as of yesterday, and you've read the emails too, the city manager refuses to give me what the final outcome of this is going to be, what he is going to do to this employee. Now, there was some delay in his, he didn't act on this, and some of this delay was because my, our investigation was going on. So that, that's understandable. But he was notified that the review has been concluded. Now I need to know what the final disposition of this is going to be. And as of yesterday's email, he refuses to give that to me until I issue a report exonerating him of any wrongdoing. The catch 22 is that I cannot say that the actions taken against this employee are not disparate treatment if I don't know what those actions are going to be. And so, and there's been some, and I don't, whatever he decides, I've not tried to meddle in that. But I do need to know what he's going to do to this employee because I can't declare it not disparate treatment if I don't know what it's gonna be. So there was, there is a memo, the only documentation from him that I, that I know exists that's been provided, let me put it that way, the only documentation that's been provided to me from the city manager is a memo dated October 3rd from him to the employee who made the allegation of discrimination. And in that memo, he refers to some of the decisions he had made, but not all of them. And so originally, we heard, we all heard, that this person's title was going to be reclassified and their department was going to be restructured. There was a new office constructed on the second floor where this person was going to move from their assigned office into the newly constructed office. Now, in the memo, he says that he's reconsidered because she complained about the title change and that he changed his mind and said she's going to retain her original title. I don't know where she's going to reside. I don't know where she's residing now. I don't know if she's in her old office, if she's in the new office, or if she's still working from home. I don't know. The reason I don't know is because the city manager won't tell me. And so I called you here today because I can't give the city manager or any of the charter officers work directive on my own. And I don't want the ability to do that. I think our form of government is fine. I don't, I'm not asking for more authority, but I would like this body to direct our employee to give me the information I need as mayor so that I can conclude this. And that's why I called the meeting. Now, I'm sure you want to hear from the city manager, and that's appropriate. I'd kind of like to hear from the city manager too as to why he's fought me on this at every turn, and he's made life miserable for our city attorney at every turn through this as well. So this is not a Andy Charles personality thing. That's another reason I wanted you here. I want you involved in this. In fact, I want you so involved that the next complaint that comes in of this nature, I'm gonna assign to one of you. Right? So I'm not doing this. I am not doing this anymore. Right? I don't make enough money for this. And neither does the city attorney. So, Mr. Schistler.
I think this is an ideal opportunity to, to settle some issues, settle some, clear some air, and I know, we want to hear from Mr. Stevenson in a moment, but I'd like to just bring to the fact that the city manager works for the city council, as does all charter employees, which means that we individually can't necessarily direct him what to do. So that we're sitting as a body, we, this is, this is a, an allegation, a charge, whatever we want to call it, this is a situation that we as a, as one can offer him the directive and say, this is what you gotta do. So I'm, I think this is a good handoff by, by the mayor. He's done a great job with what he's done so far. I don't know whether it's a communication issue, I don't know whether it's, we're, I don't know what, what the issue is, I don't know what the, what the stumbling block is. But this is the, the perfect opportunity for us to direct one of our employees to do what needs to be done if they can't get to, get to do it on their own. So I, I'm glad you brought it to us. I'm glad we're getting the opportunity to do this. It'll clear the air, it'll set, hopefully it sets precedent for the future, for future councils, future, future situations, hope they don't arise, but you know, people are people, it's gonna happen, it could potentially happen. And I agree with you. Next time, you should, you should delegate that off to somebody else if you so desire. I think you have that, I think that was in there, you can, you can do that in your, your rules. But I do want to hear from Mr. Stevenson and, you know, if there's a reason for it, fine, if not, we need to, we need to direct him to do, as his, as the, as his employer, as his boss, and we go from there. And I'll stop there.
Do you want to hear from the city manager now? Or do you want to ask questions? What do you want to do?
Yeah, same answer.
Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm not exactly sure what you're trying to find out from me, so if you could maybe ask me a direct question. The October 3rd memo that I wrote to Ms. Boswell was unfortunately written two days before she went to visit with the mayor. She was not privy to this memo until I found out that she went to the mayor complaining about this discrimination complaint. Ms. Boswell was on vacation that week. I wrote this on a Sunday, I was off on Monday, and she was on vacation that week. Now, after I was delivered the complaint from the mayor is when I gave everybody the October 3rd meeting, including Ms., the October 3rd memo, including Ms. Boswell. So in there, she is asked to retain her title as finance director, which is okay, I'm all right with that. The restructuring of the, of the department is one of those things that I saw fit so that the department can continue operating without a hostile environment. That was a decision that I made. Ms. Boswell, the office it was built was intended to be for Ms. Boswell. She had then pleaded that she wanted to remain in her office. I have not made any changes other than that. We had looked at moving Mr. Ingram and two of his associates to another area, and that's been put on hold until I figure out what you guys want to do. So whatever you want to do with Ms. Boswell is good with me. I think I laid it out in my, my October 3rd memo that I shared with everybody. So if the only thing that is undecided is where she's going to office, I don't know that, I don't know why this body has to take on that conversation. But if you want to assume that responsibility, you just let me know.
Mr. Stevenson, nobody has ever said anything about this body or me taking on that responsibility. In fact, you've been asked an email what your decision is. And as recently, I mean, this was Friday, from the city attorney to you, mayor called, I'd called the city attorney, my investigator, to find out whether you had met with the employee so she, so he can wrap up this investigation today. This was Friday. Employee informed me that she wants to have someone else present when she meets with you or she does not want to misunderstand anything. And then it goes on about availability. Your reply is, my understanding to her, to the city attorney, is my understanding that you've concluded your investigation and have passed information on to the mayor. Do not see the need for further involvement from your office. I got this. I'll contact the mayor sometime today, which you did. And it says, Andy, for some reason Pam is suggesting that I need to, in quotes, finish up with the employee before you notify council that it's been determined that there's no validity to the complaint. Right? I could read the whole thing, but that's pointless. Oh, well, the part of it is not pointless because it says, I do not care to do this. I, I should be sitting down with the employee to clarify that any future behavior, blah, blah, blah. This will go into her file. I do not care to do this until I am cleared of any wrongdoing. Well, the reason we're here, Mr. Stevenson, is because I can't conclude this until you tell us what you're going to do. Nobody is trying to take away your authority to make that decision. What I want this council to do is direct the city manager to put it in writing what he is going to do so we can determine whether it's disparate or not. I can't make that determination if I don't know what he's going to do. I'll let him reply, and then you can get. That's what's being asked of you, Mr. Stevenson. That's what was being asked of you Friday. It's still the same question. What are you going to do?
Mr. Ross, I don't think it was inappropriate for me to say, did you find any validity to her complaint? Before I decide what her discipline's going to be?
Okay. That makes no sense. That's not how, well, listen. Okay, well, listen, because I'm gonna ask this kid, don't interrupt me. This is not your meeting. Okay? How can I say that she's being treated equally with other employees and then before you do what you're gonna do? Because if you put her in an office in the library, that's disparate treatment. I don't know what you're going to do, so I don't know if it's disparate or not.
All right, let me, let me, let me, Mrs. Shonan and I met on Friday, and she informed me, right, that she had concluded her investigation, and she found no validity to the, to the, to the charge of discrimination, and that she was going to give that report to you. I asked for you for a copy of that report from her, which you refused to give me. Now, I think that it, again, I think it's reasonable for me to come into, I've got a court proceeding, okay, and for you to provide me with what she has disclosed to you. Now, what, what disciplinary action we take towards Ms. Boswell has already been established three weeks ago, other than her office. Right?
Part of it.
Well, but I don't, is this council gonna get into deciding where, where, where a director offices? I mean, do we really want to go there?
Counsel, you see the problem? You see the problem? This is the problem. This is what, this is why we're here.
All right, well, let, let.
Mr. Schistler.
Let me make, let me make short notes of this. I, I have written, as of yesterday, a, a formal notice, a formal written notice to Ms. Boswell, that if in fact, this hap, this is the second time that an incident like this has happened. And that the notice that I was fixing to, as a result of this meeting, was to tell her and inform her in her record that if this happens again, that she would be terminated. That's where I'm going with this. Okay?
Mr. Schistler.
You wanted to stay in her office, she stays in her office. I, I could care less. I'm telling you right now, she has created a very bad work environment in that section of the building.
All right, let's see if we can diffuse this a little bit, okay? All right? In, 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 in the position of Andy, he cannot offer a final, the mayor, he cannot offer a final resolution until he is certain that he knows everything that's gonna happen. This is not a normal situation. This is not a situation where it's, it's a day-to-day issue. This is something that has been a, a, a complaint that has been raised to his level, and I feel that it's fair on his part to investigate it to the full end. It is not over until he understands what's going to happen. I think that it's a very simple situation. You need to tell him what it is, and I believe you just did, that it's, it's, it's done. Okay? The logistics of an office still needs to be worked out, and I don't know why we can't work that out now and get it, get it situated. It's not an attempt to, to manage your people, it's not an attempt to tell you how you're going to discipline going forward, but it is an attempt to put the top and the icing on the cake for this, this offense so that he can render a final decision and everybody can get back to work the way we need to. So I think, I think that's what needs to be done at this point. And I would ask you, Mr. Stevenson, to, you know, tell the mayor what you're, what you're planning on doing, and you may have just done that, and that this is it, and the case will be closed, and the situation will be taken care of. And then he can offer his final, his final, because, in all fairness, if you do something different than what he thinks, then he could be wrong in his, his assessment, and the analysis could be, be flawed, in which case then the city's back, back into the liability situation. So that's what we're asking, is for you to say the final resolution, and then that's the end of it, and then he can make his final analysis and offer the final, and close the case entirely.
And, and I think I just told you what I was gonna.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair.
That is exactly my intention moving forward.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
I think we're hanging too much on the end result. We have rules and regulations about the process of what we're supposed to do for any disciplinary action. Not necessarily that it has to rise to the occasion of a complaint to the mayor, but we have things in place. And my question is, what took place between the two employees who were involved in the discussion that led to the complaint? What happened to try to mitigate that? What happened to see if things could be worked out? What happened, you know, you're saying now, you're saying if this ever happens again, you'll be terminated. Well, you know, that's, that probably should have been said from the beginning, you know? Why did this happen? Is there a misunderstanding? If there was, was there an apology? I mean, we have processes in place. They're not all written by us. Some of these come down from state statute that we have to do certain things. Do we have things in the employee's file? Do we have other letters, other infractions? Do we have anything like that? My concern is not so much that you're not telling us what you're going to do, is that I don't know that the process has been followed from the get-go. I mean, it sounds to me like the fact that the employee is saying she wants to make sure someone's in the room with her says she's not quite sure that what she hears in one meeting will be the same. Now, that's her opinion, and she's entitled to it. But somehow she feels that's happened. And then, you know, I don't know how far we can go with this conversation, so stop me if I go too far, but I've been here a long time. This is not the first time the process has not been followed. And so you talk about setting a precedence. We've been setting a precedence, employee after employee after employee. And we have quite a few who've either just left, said, I can't, I can't work here anymore. These are talented people, people we put money into training and what have you. So I, I think there's more to this than we don't know what's going to happen. I will say, we are the ones who approved the budget, and I don't think we had anything in the budget to have two finance directors. We sure didn't have anything in the budget to open a new office and go to whatever that expense was. So, you know, if you want to get down to the nitty-gritty, yeah, it does have to come to us at some point, because if you're gonna set up a new office, I mean, we, we had a 45-minute discussion on a half an FTE at the budget department, at the budget meeting. So I'm, and I'm sorry that you continued to use the employee's name, because I think everyone had been trying not to do that until you mentioned her name, Mr. Stevenson. So those are my comments. I mean, that's my, that's my big worry, is that even if he says what he's going to do, and at this point, he's being told, tell me what you're gonna do, because we're holding his feet to the fire. Who knows what decision may happen today because of that? I don't know. I don't know. I'm, I'm very, I'm very concerned about the whole thing.
Councilmember Abel.
Thoughts almost formed, but I think the most concerning thing for me at this moment is that, you know, from my end, I've just been reading emails. It's just receiving updates, but so many interjections and trying to take over, were coming from the city manager, from, in terms of how the investigation was being approached and trying to, to jump back in and, and start taking over the proceedings of the investigation. And for me, that, it seems like that's outside of, it was counsel, it was the mayor's business at that point, and it seemed as though that was a disregard for the procedures that are, that are in place. And as councilmember Donahue said, it seems like the procedures are maybe unclear, or we have different understandings about what that should entail. But if we look up, what is it, section four?
Point two.
Four point two. I mean, it really clearly says it goes to the mayor, and then the mayor should be able to handle it until he says the investigation is done. So I feel like there's been some stepping out of the role that is, that the city manager is supposed to be in, in, in this instance.
Councilmember Chambers.
Okay, well, as for the discipline, the, all the department heads are at-will employees, and they work at the pleasure of the city manager. And they, they don't have all the rules and regulations that, that regular employees have. So I don't have a problem with what I've heard on the discipline, other than the fact of we have a complaint, and the mayor's been trusted with investigating that to its conclusion, and we still don't have a conclusion. And in the complaint, one of it was this office, and I know that's a trivial thing, but it's not over until we know where the employee's gonna live. So I'd like to hear that, or see it in writing, before you conclude your investigation.
Well, again, just to clarify, that it is not, under this rule, it is not given to me the power to review the discipline, whatever that may be. My, my only power in this is to examine whether what was done constitutes discriminatory or harassing behavior. It's not up to me to say, well, I wouldn't have done it that way, or you should have done this, or I wish you would do this. I haven't done any of that. It's beyond the scope of my authority. I know it. I've, I've not done any of that. The only thing I've said to him, to the city manager, was I hope this is documented. And, well, and it's not. The only document that's been provided to me before today is the memo that I mentioned to you on October the 3rd. That is his response to her appeal of his actions. But his original actions, if that exists in a document somewhere, it's not been provided to the city attorney or me. So the only document I have from the city manager is his response to her, the employee, based on her appeal of his actions. But his original actions are not memorialized anywhere.
And just to clarify, those original actions are from July? Is that correct?
The, the original incident happened in July. Now, when he, when the city manager, I don't know, you'd have to ask him. I don't know when he reached what decisions and what actions were taken when. I, I do think he took some actions immediately, others according to the complainant. Part of her complaint is that this whole thing was dragged out now for three months, and she still doesn't know what the final, that's part of her complaint, is the timeliness of the discipline. And part of the complaint does have to do with relocation, and part of it had to do with the retitling. So what I'm asking this council to do today, at a minimum, you guys can do whatever you want here, but at a minimum, what I'd like you to do is somebody make a motion that we direct the city manager to put whatever his final conclusion is going to be in this matter in a document, because it's changed. It was, first it was gonna be, she's gonna be the CFO, she's gonna move out of her office, then it's gonna be, she's gonna retain the finance director, but she's still gonna move out of the office, and then it's no, she's gonna retain her office and her title, and the other people are gonna move across the hall. I don't know what the outcome is. And I will also tell you, and this is outside of my scope, I, now I'm going outside my scope, but I'm, what I'm about to say, I know is outside my scope, I'm just giving it to you for information. The other employees involved that filed the original complaint against the employee that filed the complaint to me, those employees are up in arms too, and threatening to quit because they don't feel this employee's been given any punishment at all. Now, that's outside my scope. I, I don't get to tell the city manager how to run the city. I do get to tell the city manager how I think he's doing. We get to do that. But we don't get to tell him how. So it's important for a number of reasons that we, that I'd like to have a document that tells everybody from here and into the future, this is what happened, and this was what was done as a result. And I'll tell you, as a result of this investigation that was conducted, I have a number of recommendations to come before you later. That's not the reason we're here today. But we don't have a real HR department here. We have nothing in our files about all these previous complaints that were supposedly made that are similar in nature. There's no records of them. There either are no records, or the records are being concealed from the city attorney. That allegation's been made too. I don't know if that's true, but I do know that all these previous complaints that have been alleged against male directors, there's no documentation of any of them. So we have problems, folks. I think, Mr. Schistler.
That's fine, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I would like to make sure that we're careful, that we don't go outside the scope of the call, the meeting.
I agree.
We have to be very careful with that. But I think that, I agree with you, I believe that there's some internal control issues that need to be addressed, that we as a council need to address them, but not today.
I agree.
I don't believe that that's appropriate for us to discuss anything of that nature today.
No.
However, I am prepared to make a motion that this council compel the city manager to answer the mayor's request for information, document, and the documents that he's requested that, give it to him so that we can close the investigation, and then we can move past this investigation and fix the internal control issues that we appear to have at this point so that we can, so we, you know, it, it makes... that we appear to have at this point, so that we can, so we, you know, it makes us a tighter ship and it makes it a better city, and it'll make, it'll be more comfort to employees knowing that there's, that, that there's processes in places, in place to protect them, discipline them, whatever it takes. So that, my motion is to compel the city manager to, as, as, as his supervisor, as a unit of one, a unit of five, really, to answer the request of the mayor to satisfy this complaint and close it, close it, close it out.
I'll second that, but I would like to see some changes. But I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Let me go to Councilmember Abel, if that's okay.
Sure, oh, yeah.
She was trying to, before you made the motion, she was trying to comment.
That's okay.
You're, you're up.
Never mind, it's okay.
Never mind, okay. So I do have a question about the motion. I just want to make sure it says what I want, need it to say.
Okay. I hope I got it, I hope I got the body of what you wanted.
I, I want a document from the city manager, it can be to all of us, it doesn't have to be to me, right? Saying what the final steps, in this case, what the final steps are going to be against this employee so that we can, I can then turn around and say, "Okay, it's not disparate." Does that?
That, that is about, that's the essence of my motion with the, with the, just so it's understood, that Mr. Stevenson made the commentary that if this happens again, that there would be further repercussions. And that, that doesn't, that, that should be part of, of his final document or final information to you as the investigator.
Councilmember Chambers.
I would like to see a, a date certain on this report.
That's a good idea.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, within 24 hours. I agree with that, yes.
That's a change in the motion, is there a reschedule?
Uh, not yet. I think 24 hours may be a little quick. 24 hours, let's.
Forty-eight hours, I, it's.
Well, it's, it's already almost the end of the day, so.
End of day Wednesday.
End of day Wednesday? End of business tomorrow?
Yes. That, I'm, that motion to compel the city manager to bring forth the final resolution to the claim, to, to the incident and the, including all potential subsequent actions against the employee if it happens again, written format, to the, put to the mayor by end of day Wednesday.
I'll.
The 27th.
Amendment.
We have a motion and a second.
You got a discussion on that?
I have a question, or?
Yeah.
So is this, you need to be specific. If this same offense happens again, not any offense, because that starts a whole new, whole new scenario here. So if you're saying that this is over once this edict comes down and the employee has said, "If this, if you ever say or think," or whatever infraction was, I mean, I, I don't want to, it needs to be very specific because we're getting ready to.
Motion is problematic anyway, because now we're directing the city manager.
Right.
What he's got to do in the future, we can't do that.
Can't do that, I agree with you, yeah, we can't.
I just want to know what he's going to do in this.
That's why I left it, you know, I left it at that level. He's got to tell us what he's going to do and then we can say whether it's yes or no. Okay, whether it's disparate or not. We can't dictate how he's going to act in the future on this stuff. That's a separate issue. That's a separate discussion.
Everything that has been done, is there any reason we're not going to ask for the document to also itemize? Because as you've said, there's no record.
I think that's part of the, the investigation of the complaint.
Well, but it, there's no record. What meetings have happened between the two to mitigate the situation? Before it got to the level where she felt, "Nothing's happening, I need to go to the mayor." Because I know other employees who've had this type of issue and it was settled.
Happened to her, because otherwise she wouldn't be complaining.
Right, exactly.
No, 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 but you're, now listen, just, something has happened because she complained to the mayor. Whether it's disparate or not is, is the decision of us as, as the, the mayor, I guess, in your, in your, in your report and response, whether it's disparate or not. That's not something that, that we can go after the fact and say, "Okay, now fix it and make sure all the documentation's here." The issue, I think, which you might, hopefully what you're talking about is something that we have to address in, in fixing some internal control issues that seem to be apparent in the HR process. But that's going forward and that would cover basically everybody, not just this particular incident. But in order to get past this incident so that we can continue with the city business, we need to have this closing document so that the mayor can finish his investigation and give it back to us. He may give it back to us if we still feel that there's a problem, in which case we can still do something as a body, as, as a supervisor.
Councilmember Abel.
I'm not sure if I understand how having the city manager say what he's going to do and giving that to the mayor is going to help us determine if there's disparate treatment, if we don't have any documentation of other incidents of similar complaints to see if it's disparate treatment. So, I mean, can we just look at what's happened so far and say, "Well, has anyone else had that happen to him, to, to them?" I'm not sure how we can even address this without, without knowing what's happened in the past.
Well, that, that's a very good point. And as you will read in, in my report to you, hopefully soon, there are some systematic problems that need to be fixed. And you're right, our lack of documentation makes it very difficult to say conclusively that this is or isn't disparate treatment because there's been people that are verbally alleging that they've made complaints against other directors that were far worse than this and were fired as a result. But there's no documents to support whether that's true or not. And so, yes, and this is kind of outside, as Mr. Schuster said, these are some of the discussions that we need to have in the future, probably outside of today. All I'm trying to do is get this solved, and I can't. Because I'm in this catch-22, where he won't give me what I need because he's saying, you know, "Clear me." And I can't. There are procedural problems, we need to fix some things. We don't have a meaningful human resources department in this city. I don't know why this whole thing, from soup to nuts, from A to Z, this entire thing was done solely by the city manager with no consultation with HR or the city attorney. We probably wouldn't be sitting here had that conversation happened to begin with. I don't know why we're paying HR professionals, I really don't. Because all they do is walk the employee down to the city manager's office. I, I don't know what we're paying for, we're wasting our money. And I hate to say that, they're all wonderful people. I don't know if they're incompetent or if they're not allowed to do their job. I don't know which. And I love them, I don't mean anything disrespectful, but we got a city to run here, we're going to be in trouble. So I'm happy if we can just get a motion to direct the city manager to do what I asked him to do to begin with and just tell me what it is he's going to do so I can get this off my plate and move on to the next complaint. We now have three at the same time. We're going for some kind of city record here or something. I'm tired of this, guys, I'm sick of it, I'm tired of this.
I think you have a motion and a second.
We do. Is there further discussion on the motion? You look like you were going to say.
Well, I don't have any more to say about this motion, but.
Okay, well, then let's, let's pass the motion and then, all right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, no opposed, thank you.
City Manager Stevenson.
Thank you, sir. If I could just kind of clarify just a couple things. HR department works very hard to keep accurate records. There is a reason that you don't have, or you have that, not a comfort level with this whole investigation because the people that I've been told that were interviewed are disgruntled employees, every single one of them. And Ms. Donahue, you can shake your head, but I, I'm telling you right now, I am privy to that information from our city attorney on who she interviewed. There are people that were let go for discipline and performance, lack of performance.
Then why isn't it in their file?
I will stand.
Why isn't it in their file?
Well, that is a good question, but.
It is a good question, that's why I'm asking it.
Well, here's the problem with that. One, if you get a disgruntled employee that comes to me and says, "I don't like Director so-and-so," is that really a complaint? I got a gentleman now that's been working for us for two weeks. He was fired because he's very disruptive to the organization. And he was let go for good reason. Now he wants to come to me and complain that the director has let him go. Really? I, really? And you talk about meeting with Ms. Boswell, was sat down, and it is in my October 3rd memo, memorandum. You guys need to read that memorandum again. She's been sat down twice and verbally talked and discussed with me, with a witness there. It is standard protocol, when we do these kind of meetings, that we have a third person there. Standard protocol. You talk about our process. This is the first time in 18 years of my employment here that a city manager has been held accountable because somebody has misbehaved. I'm not the victim, but I'm being taught to be the victim of all this, right? Now, if you've got a list of people that you think have left because they couldn't get along with me, I would love to have that list. And I guarantee you that I can give you some backup history while they're not here anymore.
Mr. Stevenson, we are a city government. Those records are supposed to be in documents, in HR.
Let me, let me finish, Mr. Bear, all right? The process that you talk about, in 18 years, the city manager has never been given a complaint that's been handled by the mayor. I've been through five mayors.
The rule was. The rule was changed in 2018.
Allow me to finish, Mr. Bear, please, without interrupting me. The process that has happened over the past is that there's a complaint of discrimination. It goes to EEOC, and it was outside council, outside council that handled that for the city. There's been four since I've been here. Three of them were dismissed in two months, and the other one was dismissed in two weeks. That's the process that needs to happen. It is very inappropriate, I think. You talk about process, and I'd be willing to discuss this process with you, it's very inappropriate for a charter member to be investigating a charter member, in my book. First of all, she doesn't know the history behind all these employees that she even investigated. And not once did she come to me and say, "What's the situation with this guy?" Until Friday afternoon when I sat and talked with her. And she told me she had concluded her investigation and told me it was unfounded and no, and not valid. Directors, every single one of them, including the fire chief and the police chief, and the finance director, and the co-community development director, and every director sitting in here works at the will of the city manager. I don't know if you know it, but there's a, an agreement that is signed when they're appointed director. And like Mr. Chambers can, can certainly allude to, because I know he had to sign them in the past, they work at the will of the city manager. And I certainly had the right, when this incident happened, for the second time, for the second time within this division, to fire Ms. Boswell on the spot. And I didn't do that for two reasons. One, we're in the middle of budget season, right, which is very disruptive. And two, I needed some time to get this thing worked out. Because I got not only Ms. Boswell, but I got other people in that department, in that division, that are very distraught about what's happened, right? Now, the first one came and spoke with me, the second one decided to put it in writing. The documentation that you're looking for is probably there. Ms. Bledsoe is on vacation. One of the people that Ms. Shone investig, uh, uh, got testimony from was an employee in HR that got fired. What do you think she's going to say? Really? Guys, you've got to use a little bit of common sense here. You've got disgruntled employees that are going to lash out because they're disgruntled about being let go, for whatever reason. We have processes in place, we have followed those processes. But I don't think that the, the city manager, not Charles Stevenson, but the city manager, should be chastised for trying to take the initiative to save people's jobs. And that's why this has taken so long. And I don't think it's unreasonable to know what the outcome of this investigation is that was done internally, and as far as I'm concerned, totally inappropriate. And now I'm the one that's being claimed the victim. There are a lot of things that we don't do right, there are a lot of things that we do right. And I think we do a lot more right than we do wrong.
So, Mr. Stevenson, you said that this was the second similar complaint against the employee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Where's the documentation on the first one?
First one was not documented, that, that, that employee asked me not to disclose that because she was afraid of repercussions. She came in and she told me what was going on, we had a good talk about it. I told her that, hang in there, that I would keep an eye on things and we would try to do whatever we can. She, she requested that it not be put in writing, because I asked her, "Do you want to put it in writing?" She said, "No." But she did let me know that the incident occurred. And again, it's an inappropriate, you, you know, a director cannot do something wrong and then rationalize that it's okay. You can't do things wrong.
Do you know what section 4.2 of the city rules say, says?
I do, and I think that's misinterpreted as well. I think that is there. That complaint to the mayor is from outside of the city staff. City staff should be dealing with the city manager. That's what the city manager is for.
Know what the rule says.
That's not the rule, that's not the way, that's not, that's not why it was.
It's being misinterpreted. I'm telling you, the way that I interpret it, it has always been in the past. It has always been in the past, the complaints like this from.
Are you familiar with the rule that was revised in 2018? You're familiar with it? Was revised in 2018, I didn't just make it up. I didn't ask for this responsibility, this is what the rule said.
I, I asked you if I could prepare anything for this meeting, and you never responded to me, so I didn't, I didn't prepare.
Well, you don't know what section 4.2 says?
I, I do not know what section 4.2 says. Generally, that it complains about the city manager, go to the mayor.
That's what it says.
I have it.
Does it say from city staff, or does it say from residents?
Want me to start?
Does it say?
Sure.
Okay, 4.2. "The city strives to maintain an environment where employees treat each other with respect, dignity, and courtesy. The city is committed to providing workplaces and services that are free of any type of discrimination, sexual harassment, and other forms of hostile, antagonistic, or disparate treatment. All city employees have the responsibility for maintaining high standards of honesty, integrity, impartiality, and conduct in order to ensure the proper performance of the city's business and maintain the confidence of its citizens. The city does not and will not tolerate any type of discrimination or harassment of our employees, applicants for employment, or our customers. This policy applies to all employment practices, including but not limited to recruiting, testing, and hiring, promotions, demotions, transfers, layoffs, and terminations, wages, benefits, including health insurance, training, and other employment-related activities." This outlines the prohibited behavior, but there's a little bit later on, it talks about how to handle it. Should I skip to that section or?
Yeah, I think that's the relevant section.
Okay, let me find it.
About the three charter officers, complaints about the three charter officers, go to the mayor. That was added in 2018. It was added as a result of a complaint that went to the EEOC, and the city council at the time wanted an internal mechanism to avoid employees from having to go to a state agency. That's why it was added to begin with.
Which means it's 100% about employees. It has nothing to do with a citizen complaining about the city manager.
No, well, this is all about workplace.
It's all about workplace.
This wouldn't apply to.
Correct.
I'm almost there.
It should be section two, I thought.
There's a lot of parts of section two. Goes all the way to F. Okay. Oh, here it is. "In the event that the conduct being reported involves the city manager, city attorney, or city clerk, the employee should report the improper conduct to the mayor. The mayor will determine the appropriate manner in which to investigate the matter, if necessary. This may include engagement of outside investigators, who will provide all findings and conclusions to the mayor and city council, who will then determine the appropriate actions to ensure that any substantiated misconduct ceases." that any substantiated misconduct ceases.
That's the city rule, Mr. Stevenson, whether you like it or not.
I, I did not write it, so I'm not, I, I, I believe it.
Mr. Sisler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have enough copies, everybody?
I, I've got.
Okay, because you can have that.
Believe me, I know.
Okay. I think that we're, we're getting a little bit off track here, I would like to bring this back to, so we can conclude it sooner or later. I think what we need to do is, Mr. Stevenson, you need to give your, your memo to the mayor, okay, before the end of day tomorrow, so that, Mr. Mayor, you can conclude your investigation and get back to us on that. Now, around that, or so, in, in addition to that, I think it might be time to bring in an outside professional. I, I think there's enough concerns on council to, maybe let's audit what we're doing in HR, okay? If we're wrong, we're wrong, let's fix it. Nobody does everything perfectly out of the box. If this is something that's been, and I'm not saying this is the result of your administration, Mr. Stevenson, but it could be something that's been going on for a long, long time, we may be doing it right, it may be best practices, we may not understand what's happening. I would like to recommend that we bring in our, our, our audit company. We, they're independent, they're going to, they can come in and if not, they can bring the right people in to say, okay, this is what we've got, this is what we're doing, this is what we should be doing, and then we can fix it and put it to bed.
Maybe, but that's probably outside the scope of this meeting.
Well, I agree, but I mean, it's.
Second of all, we have good policies.
I'm not saying, no, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying the policy's wrong, I'm not talking about this policy, I'm talking about what's happening in HR.
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
We've got good sounding policies, we just ignore them.
Okay.
Can I make a comment, please? You know, whenever there's a disagreement, it's, this person was a disgruntled employee, they didn't like me, they didn't like working or whatever. It can't always be that way, Mr. Stevenson. We've had people, and I'm sitting here looking at an exit interview, which I will not read from, but I will tell you that after 19 years of employment, this person had had enough and wrote a, I think it's about eight-page exit interview. From what I understand, that's nowhere to be found. So, nothing happened with the exit interview and that's my other thing. Somebody tells us, hey, my end of the house is on fire, somebody needs to go find out what, what is smoldering. So when you react the way you do about, you know, I'm getting picked on, this isn't my fault, this is way it's been forever, whatever, you had a variety of comments you made, you know, and then I read a letter from somebody who truly loved the city and worked for us a long, long time and the comments are just exactly what we're talking about. And I don't know if she was interviewed, but I don't know how she didn't fail to persuade the investigator that this is, this is, this is a pattern, okay? And just like you said, you know, you've got what, three EEOC complaints? They, they have to, if that's where they have to take them and you think that's a good idea that they go there, I, I, I'm, that's kind of a sad situation. So I want to know, since we're finished with our motion, when are we going to talk about this again as far as, and I don't know that I want to pay an outside auditor to do this, I want to make sure first, what is being done? I don't know what's being done, I mean, we've had, the, the one I know about when we wrote this rule said, there was no punishment, she was waiting to find out what the punishment was and it was months and months and months. So that means you're walking around with a cleaver over your head thinking today's the day. That can't happen, that, that's, that's harassment. So we need to, we need to form a meeting, call a meeting, whatever, so that we can protect the employees that we tell them to their faces all the time, we think you're awesome, we're, we're out to protect you and then we're not. So that, that's, you know, and I say, an outside audit, I mean, there are League of Cities, there are groups that could do this for us that we don't have to pay an arm and leg for.
I don't really care who it is, I'm just saying, you know, it's some, somebody to look at it.
Yeah.
I didn't think about League of Cities.
Okay, so I think we've done what I needed to have done today, but I, I, I'm just finished with this. I don't know where we go from here.
You've got to go somewhere.
But you can get used to these emergency meetings. Because you can see what it's like when I'm trying to get information that's under city rules, you can see what I got to deal with and I'm tired of it, folks, I'm sick of it. And so, from now on, I'm going to call an emergency meeting every time and I'm going to let the five of us decide and give direction because I'm tired, I'd rather sit up here than to sit at home day after day after day, bust banging my head against the wall trying to get what I need to get. I'm tired of talking to the city attorney who can't get anywhere because he, he forks this thing at every single turn. I'm tired of talking to HR and getting the, we don't have anything, I don't know, right? So when I get this report tomorrow, thank you very much for your motion, I will get this, this investigation cleared and we'll put it on the agenda to have some talk, there'll be some things, there'll be two things for me, one is closing this out and two is, these are some of the things that have been discovered in the course of this, which is outside of my authority that we need to talk about, but.
Well, I think if any of us sees something that we should be able to, we should be able to bring it forth to the body, that this is an issue, this is something we need to address and let's, let's address, maybe something to it, may not be, but let's get it fixed because it's not just for us, it's not, it's not for the current, it's for, it's for protecting employees, all employees and all up and down the line. I would expect that there'd be one more special meeting and beyond, I hope there's no more than to, to just one or two.
I hope so too.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that, that just, read into that as you will, one more I expect. Beyond that, I don't expect anything else, because that could be, it could be, it could be problematic.
I hope so too, but I'm tired of fighting this battle.
I hear you.
Well, you know, maybe we need a statute that says when the mayor has a complaint against a charter employee, where does he go? He goes to us.
I'm, I'm tired of fighting this battle. This is an uphill battle with an employee of ours.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I don't know if we need to remind the employee that they're, this person is an employee of ours, we don't work for this person, they work for us.
We do need to remind.
And the other two charter officers don't work for this employee either, which is something else that's been forgotten.
Hopefully that message has been received today.
Okay. Any other business to come before the council? We're just adjourned.
Can I make a comment?
No, sir.